Good evening, sorry to keep you all waiting, it is 6:04, I call this meeting to order. Mr. Salazar.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, this evening we have students from La Ciesca's Elementary here to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We actually have students from two different campuses, but this time I'd like to invite Mr. Oscar de la Rosa and Mrs. Elizondo to come and introduce us to a couple of fifth graders from La Ciesca's.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, members of the audience, we are privileged to introduce a couple of our longhorns from La Ciesca's, and they are...
Good evening. Alexa Vega, she's a fifth grade student in Mr. Rojas's class at La Ciesca's Elementary. Her proud parents are Italia and Alfredo Vega. Alexa is an A honor roll student and a member of the La Ciesca's Safe Sea Ranger Team. She is the classroom representative for our La Ciesca's Student Council. Not only is Alexa a responsible and kind student, she is an enthusiastic learner as well as a role model for her peers. She enjoys playing softball and volleyball, and her dream is to become a physical therapist when she grows up. Alexa's planning to attend Texas A&amp;M at Corpus Christi. We are proud to have her as our student, and we know she will accomplish great things. We also have Kiandra Esquivel. Kiandra is a fifth grade student in Mr. Rojas's class at La Ciesca's Elementary. Her proud parents are Cindy and Santos Esquivel. Kiandra is an A honor roll student and is our Student Council President. She was also part of this year's EAE Math Teams and Robotics Club. Kiandra is a well-spoken, creative, and hard-working student who has big dreams and goals for her future. She is planning on attending Harvard University where she wants to study law. She has aspirations of one day becoming President of the United States when she grows up. We are proud to have her as our student, and we know she will accomplish great things.
Next we invite Dr. Swatner to introduce us to a couple more students from Resaca Middle School.
Thank you. Good morning, good evening, Mr. Salazar, school board members and audience. I'm very proud this evening to present to you Jasmine Huerta. Jasmine is an eighth grade student at Resaca Middle School. She is the Yearbook Vice President and an active volunteer on our campus. She's part of the Gatorade, our community support team, and she is also an athlete on our campus. Jasmine wants to attend the University of Texas at Austin, good girl, and she wants to be a writer. All right, and I'm also pleased to present to you Kalen Valetto. Kalen is also an eighth grade student on our campus. She represented our campus at several UIL meets during her career at Resaca. She's done poetry, solo acting. She's also in speech for leadership class and a Gatorade as well, and she plans to attend UCLA and be a teacher.
Ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible and indivisible.
Everyone could please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, please be seated. I'd like to thank our students, and also take a moment to thank our parents. If our, the parents of these students are here, would you please stand, so we can thank you as well. Thank you very much. Ms. Garcia, could you help us with the roll call, please?
Mr. Jesus Amaya.
Present.
Mr. Leon Elgaztla.
Present.
Ms. Sanogatzi, I am here. Mr. Martín Castillo.
Present.
Ms. Darlene Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Ray Faria.
Present.
Mr. Ruben Trevino.
Present.
Mr. Gonzalo Salazar, and Mr. John Muniz.
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Salazar. District recognition. Yes, sir. Mr. Amaya, members of the board, it is our pleasure to invite students once a month, sometimes twice a month, as we get closer to the end of the year, and recognize them for their achievements. And here to introduce us to the first group of students is our Director of Career and Technology Education, Mr. Ronnie Rodriguez.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, it's a great pleasure and honor to introduce this next group. They're called a VIDA program. VIDA stands for Volunteers in Volunteer Income Tax Assistance. These young men and women did a tremendous job for our community and for the City of Los Fresnos. They were responsible for doing 350 tax returns, and for bringing back to the community over $750,000, money that otherwise would have gone back to the government, and because they were able to help people do their tax returns, they were able to recoup this money for them and us here in the community. Very proud of this group, very proud of their sponsors, Ms. Angie Peñagiler and Ms. Kristy Vargas.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, and Mr. Salazar, I would like to introduce my VIDA students. We did have a good forty, of course, and, but only seven of them were able to attend, but I am so, so proud of them. These are my awesome, I mean, they really spend a lot of hours, right? And like Mr. Rodriguez mentioned, we brought a lot of bit of money to the community, and we are, you know, and a lot of times when they go to college, they're seniors, they continue, they come back, and we have about four or five of them plus two that they were able to continue helping the community, so I am so proud of them. All right, I'm gonna introduce Ms. Alexis Ramirez. Ms. Lourdes Ramirez. Ms. Natalie Stelling. Ms. Jennifer Herrera. Mr. Jimmy Lopez. Mr. Roy Cantú. And Mr. Dagoberto Chapa.
What a great thing for our community to have these students take their time to learn, learn the tax codes and all the forms, and then with their sponsors, find a way to help so many people. Thank you very, very much. Do we have parents here? I'm sure we have some proud parents here. Would they please stand? We now call on our principal at Los Fresnos High School, Mr. Justin Stumbato, to introduce us to another group of students.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. Tonight I'm gonna introduce our TMEA All-State Choir member. I'm gonna ask Ms. Adafeli Garza to come to the front and let her walk through. She's a junior. A little bit about All-State Choir. There's four rounds of auditions. Each round, obviously, it's tougher, the competition gets, so it gets cut down. So you get to a top ten of an area below San Antonio, so all San Antonio, all regions down. From there, you get to cut to a top five, and Adafeli made the top five, which puts her in the All-State category as a singer. So we're very proud of her accomplishment, and she's a junior, so we know that she will be back next year. Again, this is Ms. Adafeli Garza.
Our Adafeli's parents here. They are, please stand. Congratulations.
I'll introduce our Athletic Director, head football coach, Patrick Brown, who will introduce our Track and Field Golf and Powerlifting Teams.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, I have the great pleasure of introducing three of our teams that really had a lot of success this year. The first one being our girls' Track and Field Team, who I think we took ten or twelve to Regionals that represented our community very well. Not only in the area meet in Westaco, which was fun to watch them run the four-by-one, the four-by-two, and beat some teams that they hadn't beaten all year long to qualify, but how hard they competed in San Antonio against some of the fastest teams, not only in the state of Texas, but in the nation, I think, from what I heard. But I'd like to introduce Coach Falcone. You'd like to come up, Coach, and introduce.
Thank you, Coach Brown. Mr. President, members of the board, Ms. Salazar, thank you for letting us have this opportunity today to recognize these young ladies this evening. First of all, I wanna introduce them. The first one is Corina Medina, she's a senior. Senior Anika Rubalcava. And sophomore Sandra Salazar. Also tonight with us is Coach Ariel Torres, Assistant Coach. Coach Howard was not able to be here today. She has had an appointment for her little girl, and so I'm gonna read from her notes. If you would please take your seat, I appreciate it. Thank you. It's, she puts here, "At this season's district meet, the Lady Falcons battled very strong competitors in the field and running event. That more so because this year, Westaco comes into our district, and Westaco girls are a powerhouse throughout the area, all the way up to San Antonio, so we knew that it was going to be a little bit harder battle. The primary focus was to advance as many girls to the area meet by scoring in the top four. This season, we had two district champions in two different events. Brianna Alex in the Hundred Hurdles, and Valeria Granados in the Shot Put. Valeria also placed third in the Discus. Additional qualifiers included Lorna Camarillo, placing fourth in the Three Hundred Hurdles, and our relay pool consisting of Sandra Salazar, Anika Rubalcava, Sofía Navarete, Cameron García, Luisa Cruz, Nora Casañeda, and Vanessa Sixnados. They placed fourth in the four-by-one, the four-by-two, and four-by-four relay to secure a slide at the area meet. In total, the Falcons, Lady Falcons, advanced fourteen to the area meet. At the area meet, the primary focus was to advance to the regional meet in San Antonio, and at this meet, the relay pool added Tanya Frasolini, who had been with soccer, and we knew, and the girls knew that, we needed that help from her, and she did come back to help us, and the two out of the three relays advanced to Regionals with a four-by-one and a four-by-two, placing third place at the area meet. Brianna Alex continued her success, and she placed third in the Hundred Hurdles, and Valeria Granados, once again, she was the area champion in the Shot Put. The girls competed very well and advanced eleven, and yes, Coach, you said ten to twelve, so the average was eleven that advanced to San Antonio. Regional qualifiers included the four-by-one, which is Luisa Cruz, Cameron García, Sofía Navarete, and Tanya Frasolini, and the four-by-two, it was Luisa Cruz, Cameron García, Sandra Salazar, and Tanya Frasolini. Brianna Alex in the Hundred Hurdles, and Valeria Granados in the Shot Put. Valeria is a senior. She had a personal best for her four-year career as a thirty-eight feet throw in the Shot Put, and that placed her sixth place at the regional meet. Valeria concludes her very successful high school career, where she qualified every year to the regional meet as a thrower, whether in the Discus or the Shot Put. The Lady Falcons will be losing eight seniors, two whom are here, Corina and Anika, and we will dearly miss you. You've been a great part of our team, and just like I know you've had a part, I know Anika in cross-country, you know, we're gonna also be missing you, but on the flip side of that, we do have a large amount of ladies that are coming back, including Sandra, which has been a very instrumental part of the relays and in the Two Hundred Dash also. She's a sophomore, and I'm sure that she's gonna get even better. I know that I've seen her progress from freshman to sophomore, and she's doing a great job. But regardless, we love you, and we are gonna miss you, seniors, and I'm gonna miss you because I will not be any longer with the team as I'm retiring, but... Thank you.
I know of at least one parent of these fine young ladies in the audience. Will you please stand? Thank you so much.
And I don't wanna embarrass her, but one of those young ladies over there got a full scholarship to Texas State. Just wanted to mention that. Wasn't sure if you wanted me to mention her. The next team I'd like to introduce is our girls' golf team. I had the pleasure of going up to watching them in San Antonio, and if you thought Lake Travis football was good, holy smokes, their golf team was incredible. I think their top five players were all Division One signees, and the competition was absolutely incredible, and Brianna, she played with three other golfers. I think the one had signed with UT, and there was another one at Texas State, and so on and so forth, and our girls, after being a little nervous the first day, really stepped up the second day and had an amazing tournament, and I really enjoyed watching them play. Just an amazing group of competitors that I think you're gonna see be successful for a long period of time. I'd like to introduce Coach Gonzalez, the guy with the giant district championship trophy.
Thank you very much, Coach. Appreciate it. Well, after five years of making and the progress, we're happy to say we're able to bring a district trophy for golf to our district, and the way we brought it was phenomenal. So, no further ado, I'll introduce them right now. Brianna Garza, first-team All Valley, first-team All District, seventy-five average for the year. It's amazing. Ana Isla, first-team All District, second-team All Valley, eighty-one average for the year. Ana is also a Stars member, so we were having to borrow her back and forth, and she actually averaged eighty-one this year, and having to split the time the way she did to average that eighty-one is amazing. We have sophomore Brianna Munoz, second-team All District, ninety-five average for the year. Josie García, second-team All District, ninety-three average for the year. Cassandra García, sister of Josie, ninety-nine average for the year as a freshman. And Alexandra Montes, she actually also comes from BAN, so it's one of the players we've been splitting with, so we're very appreciative of that time and effort. Alex isn't ranked because she joined us halfway through the year from BAN, so it's unfortunate, but it's also, it comes with the territory of splitting, you know, splitting your time up. Go ahead and grab that, Alex. Start off by thanking the parents of this year and years past. A lot of the players that aren't here that actually helped start this program, so I wanna make sure that I let them know that they're still with us here. The girls' program has grown over the past few years, and it could have, couldn't have been done without the supporting commitment of everyone here, our district administrators, our faculty, I know for myself, you know, the substitutes out there, and it wasn't an easy, it wasn't an easy ride. It did come with some perils and some difficulties. The girls of the past few years may not have been bringing the championship trophy, but they were competing at every stage of the way. Today, these girls stand before you, holding that district trophy, which took five years. Five years ago, guys, our girls weren't scoring under a hundred and tenth. You know, it was very difficult to start up a program, when a lot of parents don't know the sport. A lot of my girls still today in junior high are coming with parents who have zero clue of what it is to play golf or a club. So for me, I enjoy teaching those kids, but at the same time, I enjoy teaching those that do have the experience because they really love to compete. We're always fighting to play competitively, and we'll always do that as Falcons. We have two experienced golfers coming with, seniors that have been playing with us since, you know, their very young age, and the rest out here were, you know, came to us as freshmen, playing competitive golf. You know, I'd like to thank the booster also for helping us raise over $25,000 the last four years. That has allowed us to go to San Antonio and compete up there. I'm very, you know, I'm very adamant of, you know, competition, you know, sword, you know, blade sharpens blade. In order for us to be able to play at that competitive level, we had to go and compete where it was at, and that was making sure these girls had a trip to San Antonio at least once a year, so that they can gain that experience for future years. You know, and you may wonder why I'm talking about the past a lot, because it didn't come easy. It didn't come easy for these girls. I know we have a lot of girls up here, including last year and years before, with a lot of tears and a lot of, you know, a lot of effort, a lot of effort. I'm very proud of, I'm very proud of all these girls. We're losing two seniors, but I'm glad to say that one will be playing at the next level with UT RGV, Brianna Garza, signed in November. I'm still trying to convince my other senior to sign because there's colleges out there knocking on a door, wondering when is she gonna, you know, be interested in them, but she's gonna be a naggy, so I love the fact that we're also producing kids that have choices. And not many athletes in America can actually say that. Some of them may only go with their only choice. Some of them play their whole lives and never have one. We here in Los Fresnos were providing these athletes the opportunity to make their own choices. You know, and it was because of Brianna and Ana that I had the opportunity to go to the junior high levels and be able to pick out, you know, Josie and Bri, and Brianna Munoz. You know, I don't think golf was in their future when I first went to go talk to them. I don't think they even considered it, you know, as an opportunity, but it was an opportunity I knew I needed because I needed to help these other two girls out, and they needed a team. They needed a support team behind them that could push us along the way. Like I said, it hadn't been easy, you know, when you're dealing with, you know, with girls or teams that had, you know, two breeds on the team. So I knew I had to have a full team to be able to compete out there, and that was what, you know, what allowed us. I know I nagged the parents, you know, many times, and many phone calls over the summer, and trying to get them to play golf, play over the summer, so that they could understand what the competitive golf experience would bring them. Brianna and Ana helped bring these two girls over. Josie García, Brianna Munoz, are gonna be asked to lead the team in the future. I'm very, I'm very sure, and I'm very proud that they're, you know, to say here that they will, you know, take that mantle and be able to lead the next, you know, the next generation of golfers. You know, growth in this sport is important. At the same time, understanding the pressures and the changes of lifestyle that needs to come through a family. It's not easy planning your vacations, you know, where's the next trip gonna be, or where's the next tournament gonna be, and that's where our vacation's gonna be. But a lot of these girls understand that to play at that next level, there's some sacrifices that can be made, and I will be there with them every step of the way. I'm not gonna let them do those sacrifices on their own, and they know that, and that's why it made this team even stronger. Eighteen holes isn't easy. Sometimes that means six hours, and for those of you that have played golf, six hours is not a fun time being out there at the golf course. It can change with one swing, and roller coasters of up and down, and for me, it was just trying to keep them under control and trying to let them know that they're awesome, and they just need to continue to be awesome. Got two freshmen right here at the end, Cassandra García and Alexandra Montes, who joined the golf team with the expectation to do good. I didn't let up, and I made sure that they understood that they were gonna be part of the team, and they were gonna be called upon at any moment, and that's what kind of hardened our team out. We won district, we won our district tournament by forty strokes, by sixty strokes, thirty strokes a day. We pretty much let everybody know from day one that there was not gonna be a chance for them to catch up. I just wanna make sure that, let everybody know that, you know, you all are interested in going out there and watching these girls play. I wanna thank Coach Brown for having that opportunity to go ahead and go, it's during the day, I know, but, you know, having administrators out there was very good for these girls. I know they asked me, they asked me how excited they were when they heard Coach Brown was going up there, so appreciate it, Coach Brown. And I just wanna thank all of you all for giving us this opportunity.
Ladies, you heard your coach say that about the championship and the difficulty. We know that any championship is very, very difficult. Congratulations to you, your coaches. Parents, we realize how much all of effort and time and money y'all have put into this as well. Please, take a bow as well, parents. Ladies, make sure to thank your parents.
One quick thing I'd like to add. I was talking to a Lake Travis and Westlake parent, and I said, "How do you guys, how many times do you guys get to play this course?" And they said, "Well, what we do is we just buy a membership there, and at the course in Georgetown, they have three different memberships or whatever they have, and they just drop the kids out there at eight in the morning, and they practice till five." So, talk about advantage, that's an incredible advantage, and our kids, you know, they don't have that advantage, and they really battle, and they're proud of it. Awesome. Next and definitely not least, the most dominant program in the Rio Grande Valley by far. Our version of South Lake Carroll, or De Soto, or whomever you wanna compare them to, our young lady, if you look at them, they just look like regular, average little girls with this, the little tiny one up front squats three-hundred-and-some pounds, I think she benches an elephant and curls a rhino, and, but this is, this is our most dominant program here at Los Fresnos. They've been multiple state champions, and not only do they win a state championship, they dominate people, and when they show up, people up huck her up, the other girls. They know, they know who the alpha female is in the house, and they back up a couple steps, and so I'm very proud to introduce our female powerlifters. District, state, whatever championship you can have, they've got it.
For those of you that don't know me, I am Coach Imavella. Had the pleasure of taking over this program this past year. I've been with the district going on three years now, so I've been with some of these girls for three years, and I'd like to introduce your three-time back-to-back-to-back state champions. First off, we have Ally Heifel. Eliana Richardson. Eliana Richardson. Cassandra Puente. Mandy Sanchez. Yanelli Aguilar. Jackie Martinez. Brianna Reese. Lorena Martinez. Ashley Tumlinson. And two of our coaches, we have Coach Lilian Perez and Coach Johnny Hyphel. So, this past year, our journey started at Bronza Lopez. And it didn't turn out as quite as well as we wanted to. We ended up getting second at our very first meet this year. But what I told these girls, if we keep working and we keep striving and we keep getting better, it's not where you start, it's where you finish. And just like that, every week, we kept getting better and better and better. So, we come around to the regional qualifier and we qualified a staggering seventeen girls to regionals. Seventeen girls, which last year, if you remember correctly, we only qualified fourteen girls. So, we stepped it up and we were able to take a few extra girls. Most schools average about six, and that's probably on your better teams. We took obviously a little bit more than that. So, I'm very proud of these ladies. Weightlifting is like a marathon. You don't get stronger in one day. You do not. And these girls put in all the time, all the effort. Some of them are there in the mornings, some of them in the afternoons. Of course, we have our athletic period. Sometimes I gotta tell them to scale it back sometimes, they're like, "Coach, I went to gold last night," or "I went to RGV strength." And it's hard to keep them out of the weight room. Because once you get a taste of state, some of these girls were able to make state last year but maybe didn't place, but they knew what it was gonna take to get there and not only get there but also to compete, to win. And they put in the time, the effort that nobody can imagine. And it shows. This program has been top of the line for the past three, four years, five years, even before that when Dan Smith was here. So, these ladies wanna keep that tradition going and they do every single day. Among them, we have three first place at state, two seconds, one third, one fourth, and two fifth, which is a staggering number of girls placing. Your average team might have two or three people place. So, for them to accomplish what they did this past year is unheard of. And to do, do it three years in a row, back-to-back-to-back state champions is unheard of. It is unheard of at this day and age. To win once is hard, to win twice is even harder, but to win three, three years in a row, it says a lot to these young ladies. And all the time and effort does not go unnoticed and I'm, I'm the biggest gripe for there is. You know, if they're not doing their, their workout in the weight room, I am the first person to let them know that they're not getting it done. And I tell them, everybody in the state of Texas, not the Valley, in the state of Texas looks at one team to beat every single year and it's Los Fresnos. It's Los Fresnos girls powerlifting and the coaches call me and they tell me, "Coach, what are you doing, doing different?" And I'm like, "Guys, I don't do anything different. I do the same thing you do, but I make sure that the girls are getting the workout, but it comes from them. They wanna win, their attitude, their motivation." And on the days that they're not feeling it, that's what I'm there for, to motivate them. But beyond that, they put in the time, the effort, and it shows every time we go to a meet. And we are the program to beat, but it's because of these young ladies standing here before you. Six-A champions, state champions, you had a 5A state champion that we had to go against at regionals because we only go against 5A and 6A at regionals and we only go against 6A at state. Well, guess what? Not only are we the best 6A team, but the team that won state in 5A could not beat these young ladies. So, we actually beat two divisions at regionals. So, it is, I commend these young ladies. If ever you guys come by and wanna watch us, we will be hosting a meet next year. Coach Brown was gracious enough to let us host a meet at the LFU Dome. Every coach was marveled with those facilities. And I told them, as long as they allow me, we will be having it there every year because it is a great facility that you guys have provided for us. We're very proud to have it and the girls enjoyed it there. So, so long as we continue to be allowed to be there, we will be there and, like I say, we are the gem of the Valley and of the entire state. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, coaches, ladies. It's easy to see your enthusiasm there, Coach Vela, maybe that has something to do with Do we have parents in the audience? I can't see past our champions. Also, I believe somebody's celebrating a birthday today. I wonder who that is.
Last thing, our boys', baseball team has a, a game with San Antonio Southwest. I think we know very well how they feel about us down here, but we're the only team in our district to win. All the other teams got swept. And so, Friday night, seven o'clock, and Alice will be taking on San Antonio Southwest. Game two will be on Saturday and I don't think we're gonna need a game after that, so I'll just tell you where that's at. Thank you, guys.
You gotta be a little bit more confident there, Coach. Okay, now with the, you know, we have a, we do have a meeting. It's not, not gonna be as exciting, but sorry, guys, but we'll try to just get right going here. We did not have anyone hold, I'm skipping things, I apologize. I got district reports, Mr. Vela said.
Mr. Vela, members of the board, we present to you our financial reports for the month of April. We have in our portfolio report, you can see that campuses have taken in some fundraisers and they'll be doing some end-of-the-year activities. We also see that tax collection reports, we had a, one of our larger taxpayers make a payment and we're at a hundred and four of our budgeted collections, well ahead of where we were at this time last year. We, another important report is the budget and tax collection, I'm sorry, budget and tax calendar for the seventeen, eighteen school year. We're doing very well, we have finalized, we have finished with all of our staffing meetings and nailing down our personnel costs. We're, we should have those to the business office by the end of the week. And unless you have any questions, those are all the highlights of our reports.
Any question, board members? David, it's only fair, since last year I kept asking, "Why are our collections so low? Why are, why are collections so high?" You don't have to answer. Thank you very much. Consent agenda. There was no one to sign up in public audience. Am I on the right item now? On consent agenda, for those of you who are not familiar with our operating procedures, we do have a consent agenda where we vote on all the items on that agenda with one vote. There is no discussion. If some, if some board member would like to pull one of those items out for discussion, we do that. At this time, I will take a motion to approve consent agenda. Mr. Trevino.
Mr. President, I move that we approve consent agenda as written on today's agenda.
We have a second. Second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor of approving consent agenda as posted, please signify by raising your right hand. Is unanimous. Action items. Action item number one, discuss and take action to approve a resolution extending the depository contract between Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District and Wells Fargo Bank for the 2017 through the 2019 biennium in accordance with Texas Education Code, Chapter Forty-Five, Subchapter G pertaining to District Depositors. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Mr. Trevino? There being no discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution extending the depository contract with the LFC ISD and Wells Fargo for the biennium of 2017-2019 in accordance with the TA Code, Chapter Forty-Five and Subchapter G. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Is unanimous. Item two, discuss and take action to approve the cash purchase of seven new seventy-seven passenger school buses from TASB Byboard Vendor Rush Bus Center. That's not easy to say. Is, do we have a motion? Mr. Garza?
I move to approve the purchase.
Do we have a second? Mr. Farias? We have a motion and a second. Uh, excuse me, do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve the cash purchase of seven new seventy-seven passenger school buses from TASB Byboard Vendor Rush Bus Center. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Item number three, discuss and take action to approve employment contracts for the school years 2017-2018 and 2018-2019. This item is just having to do with administrative staff contract recommendations. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Ms. Castillo? There is no discussion. We have a motion to approve employment contracts for the school years 2017-2018 and 2018-2019. Administrative staff contracts as recommended by the superintendent. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous. Item number four, discuss and take action to approve employment contracts for the 2017-2018 school year of campus professional staff contracts recommended by the superintendent. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo? Do we have a second? Mr. Garza? There being no discussion, we do have a recommendation to approve employment contract, a motion and a second to approve employment contracts for the 2017-2018 school year for campus professional staff as recommended by the superintendent. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. Item number five, discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 2017-2018 school year. We have teachers, counselor, and assistant principal. Do I have a motion? Ms. Peterson has moved, is there a second? Mr. Trevino? There's no discussion. Have a motion and a second to approve superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions of teachers, counselor, and assistant principal for the 2017-2018 school year. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. We have some new employees here. Welcome aboard, congratulations. Welcome to our family. You can see we're a little bit proud of what we do around here. Sorry, no, no we're not. We do have a closed session, we are gonna go into closed session right now. It is six forty-nine. We're gonna adjourn to go into a closed session. It's seven sixteen, we're back in open session. We're going to, we're out of closed session, back in open session. We don't need item to discuss or to take any action on item number one. On item number two, consider discuss and possible action regarding recommendation to accept resignation of teacher ZB effective immediately and to rescind action item to terminate probationary contract of teacher ZB at the end of the 2016-2017 school year. Is there a motion? Mr. Garza?
I move to accept resignation of teacher ZB effective immediately and to rescind action item to terminate probationary contract of teacher ZB at the end of the 2016-2017 school year.
Is there a second? Mr. Trevino? We have a motion and a second, there is no discussion. To accept the resignation of teacher ZB effective immediately and to rescind action item to terminate probationary contract of teacher ZB at the end of 2016-2017 school year. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six-one. To you, sir, announcements.
Mr. Vela, members of the board, the week of May eighth through May twelfth is the week where our students demonstrate mastery in all the skills they have learned throughout the year. It is star testing week, so things are quieter on the campuses. Tuesday, May ninth is our LFHS Student Achievement banquet. It's tomorrow night at six-thirty PM at the Bronza Event Center. And on Wednesday, May the tenth, our NJROTC Awards Night at five forty-five at the Los Fresnos High School Cafeteria. There's also a band concert at seven PM at Los Fresnos High School on Thursday. So, something every night, we'll send you an updated, a revised calendar as a few things have changed, but something to put on your fridge. Those are all the announcements we have at this time.
Questions? Everybody got the information on the baseball game? Well, that was a clear no. Try to analyze or he'll get you the information. It is seven nineteen, meeting adjourned.